We leave the meeting at 1:07. I'd like to report that the Board of Education met in closed session on April 6th and April 13th for the purpose of discussion of student personnel and personnel agenda items. 1.08, which is public comments. Citizens and staff and students are invited to the meeting. They can share public comments and this is the forum that everyone joins. In addition to that, public comments are limited to five minutes. And then we will give individuals a one-minute warning. And we did receive one comment, one individual that wants to come forward for public comments. Mr. Matthew Elder.
My name is Matthew Elder. I am a PD teacher here at Ritter High School. I'm also a community member and I'm a parent. I have two boys. My oldest son, Owen, is going to be a freshman next year. And my youngest son, Jonah, is going to be in the fifth grade of Crex. Tonight, I am representing the staff and students here at the high school. The issue that I'm bringing up is cleanliness of our building. It has been issued for a while, but it seems to me in the last several months, the, it's been a topic that our industrial or our instructional leadership. So we thought it was time to speak about it. The presentation I gave you, I put together over the last week, week and a half. We as a staff field that's important for the Board of Education, we see pictures that have been collected by teachers, some stories that have been collected by teachers throughout the building, and what this building looks like on a daily basis. It's also important for us to let you know that how the cleanliness of our building has affected the learning environment for our students. I'll lead off with the positive and say that over the last week, not sure exactly what's been going on, but a lot of the issues that I've put in this presentation are starting to be addressed, which is a good thing. But I'd like to lead us off with the bathrooms. So as you look through the slideshow, you'll see several bathroom pictures. Bathrooms here are one of the biggest concerns for us at Ritter. Toilet paper is not being refilled, neither are soap dispensers. All these things are taking place often and sometimes in severe cases for weeks. So meaning that if we are, if there's a bathroom by, I'll use the one by Castell Fieldhouse, there have been several weeks where there's no soap, there's no toilet paper. So that's one example of many. Students that I have talked to and colleagues of mine that I've talked to have shared stories where students go to the bathroom and when they realize that there's no toilet paper, they do one of two things. They freak out and they sit there for 90 minutes. Or they call their friend so that their friend can get out of class and find toilet paper for them in the building. Obviously, all of this is gut-wrenching to me to think about, knowing that I have two children coming up, one coming up just in the next year. Students have reported that when we send them to the bathroom, that they can't wash their hands. So they ask, can we go find another restroom to wash their hands? Yes. And I had a specific conversation with a student who was gone for about 20 minutes, came back and said, it took me four restrooms to find soap. So, you know, alarm bells going off for me, obviously. And then with the instructional leadership, this was one of the topics. We have floors that are not being cleaned. If the success rate for making it into the toilet for boys here is anything like my children, around 50%, then there's a lot of urine on the floors in the boys' locker or in the boys' bathrooms, okay? And we believe that there are no cleaning products being used to clean the floors. I talked to a staffer that said he saw custodian using a bucket filled with water that's the color of my shirt, mopping a bathroom just on Monday. So when I went into the bathroom, it smelled the same, if not worse, than I had previously learned to check. The classrooms, classrooms are not getting swept with antifreeze. They're not getting tractioned. Many examples of heaping piles of trash that you see in these pictures are things that are commonplace for us. We see this a lot. Now, I will say that when they do get on a roll, when the custodians, the evening get on a roll, we start to see trash every day now. But after that, it kind of falls down from there. Trash is doing what they need to do now. Culinary lab is a main area of focus as far, as far as what's been going on with issues. They have been, there have been food stuff left in the trash cans and not cleaned out. So the next day, it smells awful.
Mr. Elder, can I pause you for a second?
Yes.
You have mentioned five minutes, but I would like to ask the Board of this time, I know this is a topic that we have had a lot of concerns brought forward to us by different reasons. Are you all okay to extend the time or do you want to make a senseless statement?
Absolutely. I will give everything I have to say.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So the culinary lab had, was just redone in the last year. And since it has been redone, there have been supplies that is meant to be used for student use in labs being used by even custodians. It's a break room essentially. And a new stainless steel table being ruined because of liquid being put on the stainless steel table and never cleaned off, so it rusts up. Burners used and not being cleaned, resulting in burner tops that are being ruined. There are some pictures in there as well of that. Stainless steel tabletops, like I talked about, locker room and gym space. I have been in contact with Mike Smith often and to Mike's credit, he is quick with a reply whenever I have any issue with gym space. What you'll see in one of the pictures is it looks like a wood floor with black splotches. As of a week ago, we were sitting on about six weeks of these black splotches being in the gym. We had to alter our curriculum and, well, there's already four classes in there anyways because of the construction for this weight room. But when this happened where there's sticky, whatever the substance is, at one point we had to, I had to make a decision and say, we can't, we can't do our five exercises on the floor because the day before I was, I was down there doing that with them and I was breaking that in hives on my, on my hands. So big, big issue for us in the, in the gym space. But I typically dry mop once a week, but it's not being wet, which is the main, which is the main issue in the locker room or in the gym. Locker rooms routinely not being mopped. In the girls' locker room, feminine hygiene products not being emptied from the girls' stalls. Bags not being placed in the receptacles. So filling up in just the boxes where women are supposed to place these feminine hygiene products and not being emptied. The balcony in the gym, we had to shut down because it was too slippery. We, it's concrete up there and after three or four of our students had fallen in one of our fitness routines, we had to shut it down. We haven't done that since. Trash starting to become, like I said, being changed on a regular basis, but not as often as we like. The pool area, there's the drain in the pool area that has, I would, Ms. Wakefield told me, what she thought was five to six weeks of hair clogged in one of the drains. And now there's a growth in the girls' locker room that she can't identify. She doesn't know if it's mold or what. She sent me a picture of it. And that's, you know, another disturbing effect from the locker rooms. One more thing I'll address and then we have some possible solutions is the outside. Trash cans being overflowed outside and you can see them from the track. Glass on the track. And every time we get a chance, we pick up the glass and move it a little bit, right? So we also have issues with track or trash being on the field and it gets run over by the mower. So whoever's cutting our fields don't, they don't get off of the mower to pick up the trash they run over. So it turns one piece into a thousand pieces. One of my colleagues told me that if you look at Google Earth and you zoom in, you can see trash on Google Earth on our, on our field. So, you know, students make comments to me while we're on the track that this is the Ritter way, this is Ritter for you. And that makes me sick. I graduated from Patville in 2000, but I married into the Ritter family and I am 100% a Ritter husband. And this kills me that I cannot advocate for this building anymore. I, I do all the time, but then I see friends of mine, I bet their kids here, and they say, what's going on? I go, say, you know what? I don't know. I'll have to get back to you. Where before it was, hey, we're doing the best we can do here, things are getting done. You know, I can't say that and it's very upsetting. Now, I don't want to just bring problems without possible solutions. There's a couple of things that I talked about with instructional leadership team and several teachers brought up. Can these things be done? I don't know. But all I know is that something has to change because when I, when I informed some of my teachers that I was going to be doing this, I got an outpouring of emails with pictures. I mean, on the third floor right now, you can walk into a men's bathroom and there's a chick that has been sitting on the floor for three days. So, and I just found out about that today. So many things I could have put in the presentation, but I have. So possible solutions, revisit, somebody brought up a junior janitor program and, but relegate their cleaning to common spaces. Areas like the lower lobby foyer areas, for example. This could possibly lead into a grow your own where we have students that have a passion for cleaning. I've talked to three alumni already that are, that have expressed interest in doing something like that, getting back into high school, but also in an environment like that where they're cleaning. Revisit current contract with the outside cleaning company that we have currently contracted to go in to clean the nights. We don't think that it is, that they are servicing our students and it, there's, there's time, time is now to, to add. I know there's a contractual issue. I don't know the full details, but they may be revisiting that contract and possibly moving, moving to an in-house operation. Now, one of the things that we were thinking of, we talked about in-house operation was the bus situation. We had first student verse the new bus situation and the new buses are amazing, right? The, the busing situation is fantastic compared to what it was six years ago or seven years ago. So maybe looking and analyzing that. I know there's probably an upfront cost, but you know, our kids are worth it. Create an opportunity for teachers to take some responsibility in certain areas. I know I've had several teachers say, assign us a bathroom. Something like that for certain areas that include their classrooms for maybe an additional stipend, some, some sort of, something like that. The bottom line, I think, here is that we care deeply about the school district, we care deeply about our children here, and we want to see the best for our students. And a clean building is an absolute necessity, absolute necessity. And I think we've, we failed our kids that way, but I was just at a football conference a week ago, Eli McWilliams, the Missouri head coach, said, failure is, is an opportunity to discuss. So we have an opportunity, I think, to right the ship and fix this issue. If you are interested in seeing any of this stuff, you can come to school and find me and I will take you on a tour. I would be more than happy to do so. That's all, that's all I have. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you, especially the extended time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elder. And thank you, Board of Education, for the grace. That is not our normal protocol, I will say that, but since this has been an issue that has been brought before us numerous times, I wanted to open that up to the Board of Education.
I do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I was here yesterday. I didn't see everything that you got here, but Terrence showed me a lot. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Two points, 1.21, our president's group. Tonight, we are excited to announce and celebrate the Ritter School District Award recipients for the 2022-2023 school year. We have Ms. Amy Metz, an English language mother teacher at Ritter High School, is the district's 2023 Diamond Circle Teacher of the Year. Mr. Roger Robles, a nighttime custodial supervisor for the district, is the 2023 Diamond Circle Employee of the Year. Mr. Bilal Hewie, Marion Elementary Principal, is the Make a Difference Award Honoree for the district. And Madison Kukic, a fifth grade teacher at Wyland Elementary, is the district's first class teacher honoring a teacher for excellence in their first or second year of teaching. In addition, all of our award recipients are stepping up to the teaching recipients as well as our 25-year service award recipients of the 2022-2023 retirees that were recognized during a wonderful and inspiring ceremony at the district's annual honors dinner on Thursday, April 27th, at the Ritter Auditorium. Congratulations to all on this well-deserved honor. We will move on to 2.02, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Clever Jones. So Board members, we have Sierra Creighton with us tonight. So as you know, when we have new administrators, we invite new administrators to come in, share a little bit about their background and share a little bit about their first impressions of Ritter. Ms. Creighton has, she's a teacher at Ritter, so the first impressions of Ritter, it's going to be a little bit different for Sierra. Um, Sierra is also going to speak about the leadership program that she went through this year. She is the one Ritter staff member that is the, really the pilot, the first person to go through the Teach for America Leadership Development Program. So Sierra is going to come up and speak about her experience. Sierra.
Well, first I want to say thank you, Dr. Kilbride. You have been a consistent presence for me during my time here at Ritter and just been very supportive and thank you for the opportunity to be before you, for Ritter. So thank you. And good evening, Board members. My first time before you, so I just want to say I appreciate you all and your overall commitment to our students, capturing that, that need for tradition, but also the need to listen to and value the voices of our students and really be invested in their future. So it is an honor to join the Ritter community as I expand my leadership towards an assistant principal for next year. So thank you, Board, and good evening. Today, I would like to do three things before you today and simply provide you a personal introduction of who I am. I'm not traditional Ritter, I'm not traditional TFA, but I am excited about this journey towards administration in Ritter School District. So I want to give you a little bit about me personally. I'm also going to talk about my philosophy of education. And then last but not least, I want to talk about those impressions that Dr. Kilbride mentioned earlier, about four impressions, key impressions that I've seen in my time here that I would like to leverage throughout my other career in Ritter School District. So before I get started, she's not here, but I, I will be remiss if I did not thank Dr. Dana Haywood for her impressive leadership. From the first day that I got here, she saw something in me and she provided me opportunities like the TFA opportunity to continue to build those soft skills because I was coming to a new environment. And so she encouraged me and so I applied and like Dr. Kilbride said, then there she is. But I just want to thank her. One of the things I've learned throughout my professional career, and I would like to say, since 2008, I made a conscious decision to walk into the educational arena with purpose and with intention. And one of the things that I found most attractive is we're able to retain intelligent, experienced and brilliant leaders like Dr. Haywood, we're able to attract more. And so I was really most impressed by her leadership and I just wanted to say thank you to her. And now she is here, thank you, Dr. Haywood. Blessing. All right, so let's get into it. I won't be before you long. I really only have 10 minutes and I do want to respect your time. But let's get to know Sierra Creighton. So again, my name is Sierra Creighton. I have two amazing and talented children. Their names are Tyra and Maya. They're 11 months apart and they are my why. They are the reason that I developed the model I call Five Essentials. But the model you see at the lower end, purpose, alignment, communication, transformation, and sustainability. And they came out of my work experience of being a mother and realizing that my time is valuable because I had to not only value the voices of my seeds, my children, but also the children of the communities that I serve. And so I'm very intentional about my leadership, I'm also very intentional about my learning. Hence, I took the opportunity to take on the TFA opportunity for the fellowship program. But this is something that throughout my time here at Ritter, you will constantly see me being very intentional about my purpose, making sure that everything that I'm doing with staff and students is aligned to my core values, which I will talk here soon. And then making sure that I'm communicating clearly so I can build the trust in the community. Again, I'm not traditional Ritter, I'm not traditional TFA. I'm totally committed to reimagining the educational landscape here at Ritter. My personal mission and vision is to reimagine educational landscapes, thus one, and to restore the academic integrity of our school systems. And now more than ever, it's going to take brave leaders and positive learners to do just that. My vision is an inclusive community and that's another thing I talked about in my impressions of Ritter was the diversity and the active commitment to equity. An inclusive community of leaders and learners committed to the voices inside the school system on behalf of every student, every day. That's my vision. And so as I work with students, I try to listen, I try to learn, and then I try to lead accordingly. And so Dr. Haywood gave me an opportunity to use my framework to work with two amazing colleagues, as you see here is Ms. Jackson and this is Mr. Small. And we worked together in a specialized program that we were able to design for students. And our mission was to increase their academic achievement and empower their social and emotional development. And I can proudly sit before you and say that over 80% of the students walking into our program in Room 162, they'll come and happy, they're able to set goals and advocate for themselves. We have success stories that I would love to share with you guys as we continue this journey together about the value of listening to our students, the value of seeing that student agency take place and watch them reach goals and the joy and the smiles that are on their faces daily, right? And so I think that that is truly important. And my key philosophy is grounded in a core belief to the bottom of my soul is that all students come here and all teachers can teach. See, for years, we've just been saying, if students can do it, they can do it. But guess what our teachers can do? And so as leaders, my commitment to creating conditions and creating environments that where our students can succeed and our teachers can succeed, right? With the wellbeing of the student matters just as much as the teacher. And so when we talk about allowing those voices inside the community, that's exactly what I mean, our teachers and our students because they can. And so one of the things, when I go back to my bill packs, I talk about alignment. This is our equity statement, this is on our website, is our commitment to equity. And it aligns my core belief and so that was one of the most impressive things that I saw here. And when I talk about my building packs, these are the questions in our program currently. We have been here for about six semesters, six semesters, and we have zero disciplinary programs, zero that come from us. And I'll keep in mind we deal with highly educated students who are one step away or one choice away from going to Husky Academy. And so we're able to ask ourselves these reflection questions first and then we're able to ask these questions to our students. And this is how we build packs, right? This is how we form a sense of belonging and community in Room 162. And so I wanted to be able to share with you some of the work we've done here while these students are recovering courses, they're recovering in the spirit to succeed. And I think that is a beautiful thing. So again, Room 162, if you ever want to come check us out. Another thing about, so one of the next thing I want to talk about is my impressions of Ritter. And so I've identified four key things that really have stuck with me throughout my experience here and that was diversity and equity. So we're top 25, the most diverse districts in the state of Missouri, that's pretty impressive, right? And so what that means is that now we have an opportunity to rethink tradition. Now we have an opportunity to put all voices at the table and not only value those voices, but see, hear, and invest in our students appropriately, right? And so that was one of the key things that really caught my attention and I think we can leverage that to rethink what tradition means here at Ritter. The second thing was student agency. I had an opportunity to travel with Michael. We went to see a lot of different things happening and one of the things that we saw was student agency and the power of that in a classroom where you don't even know who's the teacher, right? And we saw students and a joy of students that was unlike no other and I truly believe Ritter schools deserve that. And so the fact that we are committed to student agency by developing the portrait of the graduate, I've done work for Evelyn and seen how we've been committed to carrying as many voices as we can, you know? Ms. Dowd has even had students teach lessons on core values. And so I saw this as an opportunity to leverage a unification on what does it mean to be a Ritter grad, right? The new smart, what does that look like and what core values are we using to bring us more to humanity than we do a community? You know, who are we as people and how do we connect with each other in our values? The last two impressions of Ritter School District was the professional learning. And the fact that we have high-quality experts coming to us, as we have Dr. Goldie Mohammed come to Ritter High School. And that is something huge to think about. These are experts in the field doing innovative things in education and they're coming to Ritter. And I thought that that is just an opportunity to rethink learning, to rethink teaching in our district and across our educational landscape. And so I'm totally excited about learning more, about building proficiency skills and bringing clarity to our community, right? Bringing more evidence to the state to let them know, we got this, right? Ritter's the new smart, we got this. And so I was really most happy about that. And I continue to invest in the professional learning opportunities here as well. Last but certainly not least, I put a QR code because I didn't, I didn't want to go overtime, but feel free to take a picture of that. That is an article I was featured in by TFA as a regional spotlight and I was able to really explicitly talk about my experiences, just in case I went over time, right? And so please feel free to take a picture. You can look at that link or simply just go to the Teach for America website and Google Sierra Creighton, you'll be able to read a little bit more about my experience with Teach for America. But one thing I can say is that our investment towards leaders began with the minute I stepped into this building. When Dr. Haywood saw me and said, hey, I'm going to, I see something in you. And so I think that's very important and we leverage these opportunities to identify, connect, and develop leaders and learners. And so I just, and that's the reason I wanted to thank her because that was the reason I'm here today. I've learned the skills, I've learned my why, I've seen my vision, and now I'm able to articulate that. And there's no problem building to be in a place where you feel like you belong, you feel like you matter, and you feel like you can make a difference. So thank you for your time.
So Board members, Sierra Creighton is the new assistant principal, one of the two new assistant principals at Ritter Middle School, which you approved for employment in a recent meeting. Sierra was the only Ritter staff member to go through the TFA leadership program based on Sierra's work and then working with Mike LeChance. We're going to be marketing that program, the TFA leadership program, to Ritter staff that meeting. Mike is coming up, is it the 22nd of May?
22nd.
Yes.
May 22nd, Sierra and Mike are going to be making a pitch to Ritter teacher leaders to work to get them in the TFA program. For a long time, Teach for America was focused
About the amazing program students and staff in public schools across Missouri. These stories are tagged with "It's Our Life." May begins with a different Belcher Scholarship winner featured each day. Keep an eye out for your region's winner. These students are great reminders of why we do what we do. And with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in June for the next MSBA Board Report.
Does anyone want to sign on and send me the summary summary?
I have to.
We will move on to 3.05, Special School District Report. Mr. Rob Eaton, Governor Councilmember, will present this report.
We will move on to our business items.
3.01, Student Representative Appointment. This is the one you want to discuss. All right, so we have Ms. Holt.
Both?
Both, sorry. And, uh, so we're going to be into the office. You want to move in here? And she's going to take the main, Eric, and Clark, the third, and Pat. So if you want to.
And repeat after me. I just finally swear.
I just finally swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
No, faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of school director, I'm sorry, of student representative. Sure, discharge the duties of school representat--. Student representative.
Discharge the duty of student representative.
Uh, and and forward in the school district.
And and forward in the school district.
County of St. Louis.
County of St. Louis.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You see, this is gonna be a hard transition here.
All right, you're welcome. The U.S. Law's 3.01, Meal Price Report. Community, community of the food services. It's Dana Hill, Director of Child Nutrition Services, who presented food service recommendations to the Board of Education. And Mr. Whitman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I get started, I'd like to, um, extend a sincere apology to last week's, um, presentation. I know I got a little, upon reflection, I realized that I had a little defense and I should not have done it. So I wanted to apologize because I'm very passionate about my position and the mission that I have here as the District of the General Department. And I just hope as a leader, as somebody, there is something can be wrong with your students. And so, my intentions are always to serve and, uh, to the best of my abilities and the best of what we believe. And so, every student deserves nutritious meal, and that's why we make that much for the students every day. We know that food fuels the brain and then helps them get their nutritious meals and fuels their brains. So we just wanted to let you know that. And that my hope and my wish is to just make sure that every child succeeds their ministry. So, I'm very pleased. Our community. Perfect, thank you. Um, the mission is, we bring the, with the Ritter School Districts in partnership with the parents and community. We will develop leaders recognized for academic excellence and produce graduates who will become productive citizens and lead lives of personal and everyday value. Um, the mission is, of the Ritter School Districts, is always to ensure learning occurs in a supportive environment that enables every student to think critically, solve problems, develop the knowledge and skills necessary for success in a diverse world society. Um, our equity statement is that we will always prioritize our interaction with every student, parent, guest, and colleague. Um, so, to get started, um, Meal Price Recommendation Analysis, of course, it's the current meal price and the per meal cost. Um, the breakfast meal cost at this point in time right now, our raw cost is $2.50, and the lunch cost is $3.75. Um, the adult breakfast that we serve to adults is $2.30 right now, and the lunch is $3.75 at the right, right now. My recommendation is to have an adult breakfast be $2.50, and then the lunch, um, basically per, that's the guidelines, we need to up our prices to $4.15. Um, so, the increase for the 2024 school year, I'm now saying that we do the breakfast price at $2.50 and the lunch prices, um, at $4.15.
Just out of curiosity, why was the adult breakfast cheaper than the student breakfast?
The student breakfast was $2.50. No, no, the student, the students don't pay for breakfast, period.
Well, I understand that, but you have on here the breakfast, the current breakfast meal cost is $2.50.
Right now, this year, it's been costing us our raw cost is $2.50. Um, so.
I'm just asking.
Facing the cost for this year.
For this year.
We set the, we've approved the price less than.
Yeah.
So, it was excellent, uh, why she recommended $2.35 last year.
Yeah.
Right now, the cost is really running $2.50.
It's running.
So, Board members, with questions, any questions you have, these two could be recommended together with one motion. If you choose to do that, there's meal price, and if there's also food, please. If you choose, you can hear both presentations and consider one motion.
So, Child Nutrition Goods, of course, we do the dry goods, dry, dry goods, dried food goods, frozen foods, general supplies, fresh produce, milk juice, and bread and pizza. Our vendor list is wholesale, um, US Foods, Graves Foods, and actually Graves Foods used to be Gold Star last year. It's the same company, they just changed names. Prairie Farms, People Brinkeries, Jackson Supply, Picaro Produce, CNC Produce, Pizza Hut, and Domino's. The Child Nutrition Goods process, we select items to bid, and then we select the specifications for our milk, bread, juice, frozen, dry, and general supply items. Then we figure out our estimated usage based on the past and the projected, um, usage that we think we're going to do. Select, we select the delivery, um, days, locations, and times. We always try to get it before 10:00 in the morning, sometimes we don't. And then send, um, send them all to the vendors of the vendors. Um, we have about 229, uh, food dry items, and then about 164 frozen items, and then I had 52 general supply items. So, uh, the frozen and dried foods, uh, general supply process, selection process was ordered by line. So, uh, wholesale for frozen foods was $648,691, and dried foods was $307,460. And then general supplies was $152,346. Uh, frozen foods for Graves was $235,185, and then dried foods was $11,620. Um, Graves did not do any general supplies. So that's our second question. Uh, the fresh produce selection, uh, Picaro Produce came in at $83,815. Jackson Supply came at $158,915. Coal came in at $379,637. CNC Produce came in at $270,70. Milk and juice selections, um, is based on our April 2023. So Prairie Farms came in at, um, $309,329.93. Picaro came in at $325,640.25, and then Coal came in at $310,536.99. Uh, bread selection was ordered by bottom line as well. Jackson Supply, um, came in at $36,179.96, and then Coal Wholesale came in at $312,73.55. Um, the pizza selection, um, process, we do by bottom line. Well, Pizza Hut and Domino's came in right at the same price of $47,036. So, bid recommendation is to go with Coal Wholesale for $1,108,197. Uh, Graves Food, um, for frozen, dried, general supplies, was $246,115. Picaro was $83,815. Prairie Farms is $309,330, and Jackson Supplies through $36,480. And then Pizza Hut and Domino's were $37,060. For a grand total of $1,879,147. Um, we gave you guys the bid comparison from '21, '22, '23, and '24. You could just see the differences. The totals were 1.8 to 2.3. You know, I gave it to you guys. Any questions?
I have one here. Terrence and I had a nice lunch. It was pizza day. We talked about pizza last week. Probably talked it to death last week, but we talked about it. And, uh, yeah, I, there's a problem. Okay, there's, there's a problem. We, we could all, I think everyone in here that has ever ate a slice of pizza understands that you just don't eat a slice of pizza. My eight-year-old grandson can attest to that. So, in talking to our superintendent, talking to other few other Board members, I, I want to make a motion to approve all of this with caveat that we come up with some kind of equitable solution for our students to have more than just a piece of pizza that fits in the pot of my hand coming home. Whatever we have to do, that is, I don't want to insult, I don't want to criticize, but let's face it, that's ridiculous to give a kid that is my size, that is still growing, I know I am too, but they're growing up now, a slice of pizza that fits in the pot of my hand for lunch, especially since we have four lunches. Some of these kids have lunch at 10:30 in the morning. And as was pointed out by several people up there, this, this might be their best meal of the day. So even though we might not be able to give it to them free because of FDA and everything regulations, I would hope that we find some way of offering, we call it a la carte, or additional slices for whatever price, so that if they bring their own money, they can at least supplement that free lunch with whatever we can offer them. Okay, because if I were to eat lunch at 10:30 in the morning, I'm telling you, by the time I got home, I'd eat carton. You know, that's, that's a long day. And if you're hungry, we all know, everybody in this room knows exactly what I can say. If you're hungry, get out of my room. And that was told to me by a very smart lady up there. Okay.
I agree.
So, I, I would ask that we take the summer, regroup this, repackage it, whatever we have to do, so that the first day of fall semester, we have a plan in place to have pizza day, but if they bring a $0.50 or a dollar, whatever a size costs that they can buy there, or we offer something else. And I know you said last week, well, they can have salad, they can have their vegetables, and they can have... The loneliest lady in that cafeteria was off to the side with the salad, let me tell you. She was looking for a friend. Because there was no one going over to her. So, I would ask that we do that.
I have no, no issues with that whatsoever. I agree with that 100% for the a la carte items and things like that to purchase, that we have the National School Lunch Program and we have to.
Well, you know, rules are meant to be.
So, so.
But I'm part of those.
I appreciate the approach, but the danger, you know, so the goal of a superintendent team is to always share the board, worst case you have. If we get sideways with the USDA program, what's the danger?
Uh, they could stop our reversals.
Yeah, they stop your reversals. We could not get reversed, and we would, we couldn't.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Just being the program.
So does that include the a la carte, so?
No, the a la carte, the a la carte items.
So this is.
The items that students are paying.
This is all the student, this is what we're making for the students, we're following the rules and everything else. If students choose a la carte.
Yes.
And then they would have to pay for it.
They would get reimbursed.
But we, right, but we don't get trouble for it either.
No.
No, we just don't get reimbursed for any a la carte items. That only is, just the meal itself, but we're willing to do it.
So then my question will be, should we be removing the pizza information that's on here? Because once we remove it, then we have no dollar on this, even include in the reimbursement.
Right.
Correct? Because this, everything she presented, this is based on reimbursement deals, right?
It is.
Or is it based on a la carte as well?
Well, this is based on our food program, our whole food program.
The whole food program. Based on what she's projecting will be used next year, next year. It could be lower, it could be higher. It's based on the costs and the projected usages that she's, that she has rendered.
And this is reimbursed, and this is all reimbursed through the program, is that correct?
No, it could be our a la carte items in here too. Whatever she has projected, she's going to use. How many loaves of bread, how many chicken patties, how many pizzas from Domino's and Pizza Hut, how many pizzas from, you know, you mentioned Coles.
Coles.
So, the regular school pizza. So it's, it's everything, it encompasses everything.
Yes.
So you can, you can leave it in, um, you can, you can take it out if we don't serve pizza from Domino's or Pizza Hut. As Mr. Eaton asked last week, we would, instead of serving that pizza, we would serve the Coles, general rectangle frozen pizza that everybody knows as school pizza.
And the, and the question.
Oh, I have a question.
I have a question. I was wondering how often does, like, does fruit and vegetables get delivered? Because I know for me personally, I would get more fruit and vegetables, but sometimes they just don't look the freshest, and so I kind of avoid them.
We get, like, we get on Monday, usually on Mondays and Thursdays is when they should get them. And sometimes we get CNC products too, which they're, yes, they don't cover it up their face. So sometimes we get steak.
Because that was, that's the only thing I have of, like, the fruit and vegetables, because I would, I would get more, but like, sometimes they just don't look appetizing, and so I would just get the main.
And then, and then there are some canned fruits and vegetables.
There's canned fruits.
So it's not all fresh.
Yeah. The good thing is, is for you, um, Jackson Supply was our produce company that was passed to your head, so Picaro is somewhere, so it's a different.
I, I think that Dina can also, you know, continue to, uh, work with her student committees that she has formed. So she had one, uh, Mr. Clark was on, and then she also had students go to the food show with her, uh, not Terrence because it's a senior, but she took students that would be her next year to look for the new items that they would be interested in. So she'll continue to work with those committees as we work with some.
We had about 25 students, and Ms. Schindler got us some of her leadership people that are very roisterous kids, and, um, they all got on the bus, and, um, we took them to the food show, and, um, they tried all new all products and stuff like that. Um, had some opinions about it, and they were like, saying some foods were good, and we're like, good because we already served that, we need to go get that. So, but there's, there's more, so.
I did have one quick question, and I don't want to beat it, but, so, I'm looking Domino's and Pizza Hut. Have we, and maybe you sent it out and they just didn't bid. Have we looked at, like Papa John's, since Papa John's does the, um, fundraisers, the teacher nights, or the pizza nights and that kind of stuff? So if they're giving back to us already, have we given them an opportunity to?
They didn't do it.
Okay.
Um, can you just remind me again for the, in the, uh, nutrition bid process on number two, it says select specifications for bread, milk, juice, et cetera? So those specifications are ones that we are given?
Yes, through the states, through the National School Lunch Program, we have to go by the meal cutter. And so, like, you have like 51% whole brain bread, um, and 70% of whole bread breads, whole brain breads and stuff like that. So when we have to, when we specify what we need, that's what we're getting.
I'm curious, do you also look into, like, gluten-free for kids that have celiac or have other issues too?
Absolutely, we have a lot of gluten-free stuff in the bins. You know, on food, except that we get the bread, lappos, pancakes, the meal options, cereals.
Madam President, I would move that we approve the food service recommendations as presented to the Board on this evening.
I'd like to second. Ms. Swans?
Yes, Ms. Garden?
Yes. Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, Pam.
Ms. Enrique Escondido?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And my vote, yes.
Thank you.
Look forward to having one.
Is there any way that we could get, like, reports from your meetings with your students?
Yeah, and pick them to, they'll write them down. So I have my notes here, so I have to read them.
Yes, for sure, but I would say that these are, like, even once or twice a year or something, just kind of give us an update on, like, how it's going with them and feedback that you're getting from the kids.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
3.02, Social Studies, Curriculum Analysis and ELA Resources. Dr. Nina Stewart, Assistant Superintendent, Political Instruction, and Mr. Eaton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last week, we came to you with a few of our teachers as well and presented some resources that our social studies committee was recommending as well as some ELA resources that, that the National Department recommended as well. Uh, so today, we're going to provide a overview of that presentation last week. And, like I said last week, um, this process is a long tour initiative and vision, which includes a two-year process of teachers coming together and administrators to collaborate on an input as relates to social studies and English Language Arts. Um, we also develop shared understanding of what our curriculum and our resources and our instruction should look like, and also with a goal of having quality and quality resources.
So our social studies review and revision work definitely aligns with our equity statement as we're working for equitable outcomes for all students. We're making learning personalized, and students get what they need. Um, that's for our comprehensive-based learning initiative, and so we've efficiency scales. We are empowering students to reach goals and reflect on their learning, and definitely develop student agency, and then increasing cultural responsiveness to, to leverage elements that may be academic means of our students.
So just as a reminder, these are, this is the resource that was selected by the committee for pre-K through fifth graders. Um, it's Studies Weekly, which is a 32-week newspaper for students. It receives a weekly, students are able to use it. They can use it online, or they can use the paper version. They can add annotations on the line, highlight the line, they can print it. Um, it comes with audio and video and virtual field trips, professional development assessments embedded. It's aligned to all Missouri learning standards, and we are going to create our proficiency scales that are aligned to these resources as well.
And so, uh, we're also proposing to continue our Junior Achievement Biz Town experience for our fifth graders, um, which addresses fifth grade Missouri learning standards that aligns to academic standards. And then as well, the biggest thing with this is that it provides that real-world, um, experience for our kids, where they can so apply everything that they learn in the lessons that lead up to this experience. Uh, our eighth grade, and so, um, from, from last, from last week, uh, fifth grade, sixth, or sixth grade and seventh grade are going to, um, continue with their current resources. I just talked to the National Geographic rep today. So the sixth grade geography resource will be available in the '25, '26 school year, that, that new edition that they want to adopt. And seventh grade world history is available in the '24, '25 school year. So they will be sending us samples for those teachers to pilot, and, um, we'll come to you when those are available in the next couple of years. Uh, eighth grade, uh, is choosing to adopt, uh, the newest version of TCI, History Alive in the United States Through Industrialism. Um, as I talked about last week, this newest edition, um, adds in a lot of video lessons and input projects, um, so the kids can, um, really dive into those experiences. Ninth grade, US History, tenth grade, Southwest, and eleventh grade, Government. They're all human products and resources through National Geographic. Um, those resources have a heavy focus on vocabulary, reading strategies, and analyzing primary and secondary sources through DDQs. DDQs are document-based questions. So really digging into the sources, primary, secondary, and analyzing those, and then critiquing them, and then responding in just time.
So these are the resources that were selected from the committee for Advanced US History, AP World History, and AP Government. Uh, these resources are aligned to our AP requirements. Uh, students are asked to analyze primary and secondary resources, or sources, I should say, and then it also includes rigorous stats for students.
So the Business Impact, um, I broke into pre-K through eighth grade. So the, the, uh, pre-kindergarten, um, well-being, um, uh, newspaper that aligns to the NAC standards and Missouri early learning standards is $18,500. They also had some additional materials, um, for kids to use in their centers as well. Uh, kindergarten through fifth grade, Studies Weekly Newspaper online was, and in person, uh, physical newspapers was $210,000 for a seven-year subscription. Um, the professional development in person and online for seven years is $14,000. Um, fifth grade, JAVI's Town Site Visit and Transportation will be about $7,000 annually. That's for all six art elementary schools to visit the, um, JAVI's Town location just to view. And then the eighth grade, TCI, um, student textbooks. They have physical consumable notebooks that they use as well, online access for students and teachers for seven years, $77,000. A hundred for a grand total of $327,000. And then for high school, Business Impact, ninth grade, tenth grade, and eleventh grade, all through the critical resources of National Geographic, seven-year subscription is $195,000. The Advanced US History and AP World History, um, through Bedford, Bedford, Freeman, and Worth. Um, that is a total of $34,000 together for that $20,000 and $14,000. And then AP Government Resource from Rock Hill, um, for seven-year subscription is $12,500, so that comes to $241,500. So the grand total for everything, pre-K through fifth grade, $249,500. So the grand total for everything, pre-K through fifth grade, two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand five hundred. Eighth grade, seventy-seven thousand five hundred. High school, two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand five hundred, a grand total of five-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand five hundred.
So that's seven years of subscription. And that's, that's locked in for the same property as pre-k?
And we obviously have a multi-year discount when you go with the seven years as well.
I don't know if the math on the first one, and I'm not great at math, I couldn't have written that right. The Business Impact, pre-K through eighth, because the fifth grade, that would be seven thousand times seven, right? Because we're paying for it, or, or we just?
That one is just seven thousand for one year.
Oh, so we don't have to do that? Got it.
That's the only one that is just like a one-year kind of thing?
Got it.
Transportation would change year-to-year shares like that.
Just protection, but next is the one we lost for that.
Okay, thanks. So that's for twenty-three, twenty?
Correct.
I was making a mistake. So thank you for asking.
So we're transitioning to ELA. These are the recommendations that came from our ELA cadre. They recommended libraries for kindergarten through second grade. And that, and then also our middle and high school recommended some professional development from Literacy Link for twenty-four days. Our middle and high school. And then also our high school recommended No Reading, which is a grammar, writing, and research resource that our middle school students are using right now. And for ELA, the Business Impact for those independent libraries for kindergarten through second grade is eighty-two thousand five hundred. And for the high school for No Reading for three years, thirty-two thousand. And our middle and high school, the professional development from Literacy Link is nineteen thousand twenty dollars for a grand total of one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand five hundred twenty dollars. Are there any questions?
Just curious, because every, every student has Chromebooks, you know that. And we still end up buying at least a classroom set of physical books. Do you foresee a time that we, instead of having the Chromebooks, that we have some kind of tablet and just load all these books onto these little tablets? Would, would that be a practical thing or?
We've run tablets in the past. We've purchased tablets at, at the early childhood and the kindergarten level and we got negative feedback from teachers. The, the speed of the machine, some of the durability of the tablets was really being questioned.
Yeah, all the, so the textbooks are online and most of the teachers acknowledge that. And they just want a classroom set. For the rare occasion, maybe a Chromebook isn't working, get your take-home book to still complete their homework and still, you know, still stay engaged in the task. So it's a class that, that we want just as backup.
So like on the first day of class, on the first day of semester, they're all told, oh, this website got one of these books.
Okay, so every, every, every curriculum company has a different platform. So the National Geographic, yes, National Geographic is called Intech. So they log on through Google and Google, it takes them right to that, to the resource, they can interact with it, they can take texts, they can highlight. Teachers assign their activities, they watch videos on there, you know, all the things that we kind of talked about, all those features, all those, all those mechanisms on there as well. But every, every textbook has its own platform, the app, I guess you could say.
Okay, so then would we put a textbook on the Chromebook, they would go to the website?
Correct, yeah.
Log in, that is better.
And then it just, the textbook is there on that, with the additional features as well.
With our textbooks, are they, are, I'm asking two questions. So are they all stored in one location in the classroom? Or do you have like a library for them?
Yeah, so each teacher has that set.
Like I was in the government classroom the other day, they have built-in bookshelves and those books are there. And then there are some storage rooms in each room as well, the additional books are in as well. And you know, overfill up like student consumables or things like that, like that, so those are as well.
Sorry, I was asking that because I'm just wondering if there is ever damage to classrooms. I know we've had like incidents and stuff where like property damage. So I'm wondering about replacement of textbooks, like is that included in the price or do we, we just pay, I would imagine, just pay separately like in college?
Yeah, and there, we definitely have to buy additional textbooks for one reason or another and usually, and we do that. We replace them if necessary.
Any questions? Madam President, if there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the social studies curriculum. The ELA resources is presented to the Board of Education.
Second.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Enrique Escondola?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Stodarden?
Yes.
Ms. Lons?
Yes.
And I will yes.
Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So our facilities are important in helping us achieve the mission and vision. Our facility should provide the best physical environment for learning to occur. All district schools should provide consistent physical environment. Today in the update, I am going to discuss middle school window replacement, repairs to the windows at the administrative center, HVAC piping replacement of cracks, and Ripon High School cafeteria graphics. For the middle school window replacement, the windows throughout the district were installed in the early nineteen nineties. Many of those windows are impossible to open. There's a design flaw that makes it impossible and difficult to, to open those windows. Opening those windows is important to regulate the temperature in classrooms from time to time. Also, opening windows improves the air quality in classrooms when we get fresh air into the space. And then there are also improvements needed to the building envelope in all buildings over the middle schools. Our performance contractor, GRP Wegman, was asked to develop a plan to replace the windows and improve, and improve the building envelope at the two middle schools. To replace the windows, we would replace the operable windows with a window that has a heavy tent. Replacing it with a heavy tent is, has two benefits. Number one, it will help with energy costs and kind of hack like that sunglasses, you know, to shade it out. But also for security because people can't see into the windows. And then we would also install heavy-duty screens that would break so easily. You see some pictures there, those from the school, Signal Hill School, similar to the windows that, that I, I am. We would replace damaged pane windows and also any repaired, any damaged or missing soffit on the schools. Replacing, we would replace the damaged door system at Ripon Middle School. You can see that there's a door system that's completely rusted through. Replace any damaged mullions, that's at Hake Middle School, at the base there where the bottom of the door is rusting. And then we want to install a new door system and with a removable mullion at Hake Middle School. That's that R in the middle of the door, we can remove that so we can get supplies in and out of that space. We would repalt the doors and windows that are not being replaced. Paint and upgrade the downspouse, paint the doors, paint the railings, give the exterior of the school a fresh, crisp look. GRP Wegman can complete that work for about three-point-nine million dollars. Some of that work could begin this summer. However, the windows are going to take some time to arrive. The window replacement, when they arrive, will occur outside of school hours. So in the evenings, it'll be on second shift that they will go in, replace one or two classrooms in the evening, have that classroom space ready to go through learning the next day. And then that project would be completed using S R three funds, federal fund. And so I'll be recommending that the Board of Education accept a bid of three million eight-hundred-ninety-seven thousand ninety-five dollars for window replacement and building envelope improvements at Hake and Ripon Middle Schools. I'm happy to answer questions.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to make the motion that we accept a recommendation and accept a bid of three million eight-hundred-ninety-seven thousand ninety-five dollars for window replacement and building envelope improvements at Hake and Ripon Middle Schools.
Second. Ms. Lons?
Yes.
Ms. Stodarden?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Enrique Escondola?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And I will yes.
Thank you.
We will discuss the administration building windows. Those windows are in, the window frames are in good shape, but the windows themselves are in need of repair. Those windows, many are inoperable and some have actually caused injury because they are very tall and there's a top window pane that can fall down and has fallen down before. If you've noticed in the boardroom, there's some windows that have sticks kind of holding that window up. And that's the type of thing that we want to, want to repair. GRP Wegman has voted sixty-seven thousand dollars to repair all of the windows and then to replace any missing screens in the building. And therefore, I'll be recommending that the Board of Education approve the cost of sixty-seven thousand dollars for the repair at the administrative center. I'm happy to answer questions.
This is a kind of random question, but it's tied to this, I promise. Do we have any sort of like grow-your-own program with Wegman? Or like some sort of internship or something, opportunity for students? Because we, you know, we get a lot and they do a lot of the work on our buildings. That might be something to consider for like our students who want to go into, that are in technical schools or want to or something. That'd be a really great pipeline for?
I've seen that other districts have taken advantage of what you're recommending. I forget what district it was. It was out in Saint Charles County where they had a, like a presentation. The construction team gave a presentation to kids in CTE. I don't believe that we have anything with Wegman at this point.
Not at this point.
These are usually pretty good jobs, like these, you know, construction jobs are very good. So this would be a great opportunity for our students to, to learn, to see, get part of these jobs. So, yeah, and they're hard to get into as well, from what I understand on some of them.
Yeah, I think most, most students go to a, go to a, at least a community college for a technical school such as, one more kind of tech, yes, but I'm drawing a blank from the name right now. Where, I'm sorry.
Rank.
Thank you, rank it off. But we will certainly ask both of those vendors, GRP Wegman, as well as Amoresco, as it suffered for much, also Wegman, who works in our HVAC a lot, so we'll talk about that.
There could be opportunities. There'll be other opportunities where, you know, ocean safety requirements, we wouldn't, you know, allow for that with any areas where it would be feasible, I think is a true good idea.
But also I would say maybe not while our, our students would maybe have graduation.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, right? Like if we have some sort of, so like, you know, community benefit agreements or something where it's like, yeah, you know, you're our contractor or a vendor for this project, but like one of the agreements is that you come in, you know, you have two slots for students or, you know, what have you. But they make a presentation to graduating seniors and if they would like to partake in the program, then it's there. And if not, then that's fine as well, but.
I mean, I think it's, it begins before then though, like building that relationship and giving them exposure because I'm not going to go into that career field if I haven't even been exposed to it. So even if like you're talking about having them come in and exposing the students to that, talking to them, them showing like, here's the work that we do. I think of Clayco, the CCE program that they used to have, I don't even know if it's still active at the high school, but they had a program where the students specifically that were interested or thought they might be interested, they would go to Clayco so many weekends after the year and they would take them to construction sites and they would make sure that they have been through the ocean training and they would have their mentors and stuff work with them to help expose them. No, they couldn't give them a job, but they gave them exposure so they could start learning about the different avenues.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the cost of sixty-seven thousand dollars for window repair at the administrative system center.
Sure.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Enrique Escondola?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Allen Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Stodarden?
Yes.
Ms. Lons?
Yes.
And I will yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Part of the proposition as planning, one of the priority items, was to replace the HVAC piping at Kratz Elementary School. That old pipe is decaying. It often springs leaks. When that happens in the heating season, that's a hundred milliliters of water in those pipes. Luckily, that hasn't caused injury, but obviously leaks over the past two years alone had caused well over a hundred thousand dollars of damage and great disruption to the school. In March, the Board approved that Amoresco be added as sort of one of our performance contractors. And Amoresco has developed a plan for replacing the pipe at Kratz this coming summer. There's a long list of the scope of work, but to hit on it, that would include replacing the large and small pipe, installing new control valves and valves at each unit, replacing one of the fan coil units, one of the four fan coil units in the cafeteria. It would include seismic gracing, that would be an extra precaution in the event of a seismic earthquake or something like that, that the pipe would actually be graced and then the pipe would not, would not fall to cause injury. Other things would be engineering the pipe chases and valves to be accessible for maintenance. Right now, in order to get to the chases, we actually had to break into walls and then do wall repair. And then by pit, and install BICAS valves on the mains. This would allow us to isolate the piping system on each floor. And you can see, there's some pictures of the small pipe and the large pipe. You can see the large pump system in our pump room there as well, where they'll be doing some upgrades to that space as well. Amoresco proposed a cost of one million four-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-forty thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars to complete the work. That is, again, one of the planned process projects. And just wanted to note that that cost does not include the abatement costs that might arise. We know that there's asbestos in certain spaces in the building. If an area that they are working on is impacted by that, we're going to have to remove that asbestos, which is common practice when we get into these types of repairs. And therefore, I'm going to recommend that we're. And therefore, I'm going to recommend that Board of Education accept Amoresco quote of $1,440,364 for HVAC pipe replacement at Kratz.
Mike, can you talk about summer school, the summer school plan?
Yes. So because there's going to be great disruption to Kratz because of that replacement, there are sufferings that would still have air conditioning, but it would be a great impact to the school. So students that attend Kratz at a, a summer school will actually be going to Marvin instead. Marvin would be a very full school over the summer. And there's work being done there as well. But in order to do this, during the summertime, in order to have it ready to go when we come back from summer break, so Kratz is ready to go, we felt it was best to move summer school to Marvin Elementary.
Can we help the devastated children?
So yeah, students would not be responsible for getting their, they'd have a bus.
But all of the schools have transportation as well, so.
So then in replacing all of this, are we replacing pumps, motors, draps, controls and everything else as well?
We are replacing the control valves. So yes, the controls are at the, at the terminal units. Those are being replaced, so that's going to be brand new. The valves at each unit are going to be replaced. The only thing we're not replacing are the actual unit ventilators. So we would love to be able to do that at some point, maybe the next fall issue. But, but, but this would be replacing everything up to the unit ventilators.
Okay. And does, Blaine has the ability to change temperatures and everything in the rooms from remote source, right?
Yes.
And is that part also likely to be upgraded as well?
So we've actually, we have actually gone through an upgrade to that system already. But we are also going to be ensuring that the unit ventilators are in communication with that control system. So that is part of the project as well.
Is this a low voltage system?
It is.
Twenty-four or forty-eight?
That I don't remember.
Just carry this if you like.
You got to my little pal.
Well, I appreciate you. Madam President, if I can, I would, I would move that we accept the recommendation to the Board of Education this evening from Amoresco and their quote of $1,440,364 for the HVAC pipe replacement and upgrades at Kratz Elementary.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Amigascombla?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Skard?
Yes.
Mrs. Solms?
Yes.
And I will guess?
Thank you. And to discuss the graphics and furniture for the Ritter High School cafeteria. Of course, updating the Ritter High School cafeteria was also part of the process of planning. Construction for the cafeteria has already started. Majority of that construction is going to take place this summer. While graphics and furniture were part of the planning, we wanted to provide a modern crisp look to, to the space because it's such a high-profile common space for students and the community. Students were asked to be a part of the design planning for the cafeteria upgrades. We had participation from 20, 25 students. They gave us valuable input and we believe that the students did a commendable job providing a direction for them in the future. Some diagrams of the tables, you have seen, but the graphics on the walls are, were designed of using the input from those students in that group. And you can see that the tables, we have a variety of solid color tables, different color solid tables, but also tables that have graphics. This is the lower section, the last one, again, this one, the lower section of the cafeteria. You can see the hallway that is going to have stool seating at countertops. This is upstairs in the upper level of the cafeteria. The wall that says Husky Nation is the wall next to the robotics classroom. The wall that says Ritter High School is the wall next to the health classroom. You can see there's booth seating. And you can also see the new addition at the upper left-hand side of that screen. And this is also in that upper level. You can see that there's large murals, some banners. And banners are actually decals for the wall as well. And you can see the, the type of paint and decor that this shows in front of us. And just some, just a small sample of what the booths and tables have.
And I would just add that we will be using regular chairs, not the stools attached to the tables. And trying to anticipate another question. All of the current furniture in Ritter High School will be passed down to middle schools and elementary as we need to use that around the district. To replace the broken, I'll definitely try to get some standard color in the school.
This is, this is so cool. I want to look there and have one, so we can keep that.
Yeah.
Let him know it won't be.
Pizza Wednesday. Question. I know this, this doesn't have direct pertaining to the furniture, but as construction moves on and goes forward, is, is there still going to be a point where the bridge crossover is going to be closed? And that usable at all from one side of the building?
Well, yes, yes. And over the summer, you know, and then we are going to be working with, we're trying to get, you know, some areas opened up in that space so that there are ways from one side of the building to the other. So it's not as, as much of a disruption to, to the school. But that bridge will be closed a lot. Because we're going to be attaching new storefront to the bridge because it has part of that addition.
Okay. You think you anticipate it being open by start of fall?
I can't answer that.
The bridge itself?
Yes.
I can't answer that.
Those, those are mouthways enough for me to get around to. You can't get from the front to the cafeteria very easily.
Our hope is, is that it would be.
I don't know. It's going to go east to go west. I would say that Dr. Heywood, the administration and the staff and the students have embraced the philosophy that we instilled in them at the very beginning, that construction is a pain, it's inconvenient, it's dirty, it's noisy, but it's worth it in the end. And they have embraced that and they've been very flexible, very, everyone. Staff, administration and students, so.
Another question. How easy would it be to clean like the booths and stuff? Because we already had the concern earlier in the meeting about the plumbing. And I don't want to make the new stuff get stop harder.
Right. So, so the, that's a great question. And we took that into account because the booths and the tables are casters, on wheels. And so they can be, so just unlock the wheels, move it out away from the wall so it can be cleaned.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Going back to the question that Brad asked. So when do you anticipate closing the bridge? Is that going to be before the school year ends or is that going to be during the summer?
Summer.
And then do we have a potential ETA on the completion of that project as well as the fitness room? Because I was under the impression that some of this will be done like for Black and Orange Day. Are we still on track for those timeframes?
We have run into a few setbacks when it comes to, to that construction. There are portions that will, a large portion of the fitness center will be ready by Black and Orange Day. But the entire thing will probably not be ready by that time.
It's the delay of the structural steel for the front, is that right?
So what we're waiting on is, there's a large storefront panel at the very front of the, of the fitness center. So when you walk in off of the, the front driveway, you have the arch openings keeping that architectural vision of the, of the outside building. But when you walk in, it becomes glass storefront. That glass storefront, because it's fire, has to be fire rated and there's only one supplier in the country for it, that there's a delay on the manufacturing of that storefront. So we're pushing on the manufacturer to get that in. But we won't have, we will not be able to have occupancy of the space until that storefront is in place because it's fire rated.
But everybody. Everything with paint, then, should be done.
Yes. Everything else except for that storefront is anticipated to be completed by then.
The fitness center.
The fitness center, correct.
Cafeteria will probably not be ready by the start of summer. Complete. Walker will do everything he can, but we're not sure it'll be there. And Dr. Heywood, there's, and her administration staff. So they're, they've already made plans.
So can I build off of one thing that we'll get to about the cleanliness that we talked about, not the fact that we're going to chairs and everything. So it's not as easy just to hold the whole chair and table all at one time. Makes a big concern again for the cleanliness of things. So, you know, I know that we've asked teachers and staff to put up chairs in the rows. Obviously, we can't do that. This is a lot. Are we shooting ourselves in the foot with this?
So part of the, part of the items that are being ordered for the cafeteria are specially made dollies for the chairs so that chairs can be stacked on the dollies and rolled to the side, you know, in order to help with that cleaning. It is going to be a challenge, you know. But moving the chairs out of the way, the tables roll up on casters, being able to get into that space and keep it clean is definitely affordable.
I'm just like, even in between lunches, you know, it just builds up and builds up. And then, you know, I just want to make sure that they're able to get in there clean and out before the next lunch comes in. Just, it's beautiful, but we're not clean. So that makes me concerned.
May I also say, I was up here today and I did notice that there was custodial stat signed in the cafeteria. So we may have to look at, you know, potentially increasing that support in that space when you're talking about in between lunches because to me, they were eyeing things and cleaning things at that point in time. So it's a great point, but what do we look at? How do we look at being proactive when we know we're creating more spaces that require cleaning? So what does that proactive plan look like as we're talking about all of the redesign and thinking outside the box and getting into the cost situation?
I'd also like to say that the cafeteria is one of the cleaner spots in this school. There's an occasional spill, but it's usually like everyone's on top of it. Even the students will avoid it so that it's not trapped around the cafeteria, even if they don't do necessarily anything else to help them. But it's usually cleaner than the rest of the school, so.
Thank you. Okay. Madam President, I want to move that the Board accept a bid of $31,400,000 on freedom materials for the installation of graphics and new furniture in the Ritter High School. Second? Mrs. Solms?
Yes.
Mrs. Skard?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Amigascombla?
Yes.
And Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
And I will guess?
Thank you.
I did have one other thing. Do we educate our construction crew on like school property rules? Because I have heard of some concerns where construction staff are seen on site smoking. And I know we have like rules and regulations surrounding that. So we, it's just kind of friendly reminder, there are some rules. We want school property.
Yes, they have been educated, we're sure.
Thank you. We are going to move on to 3.05, our ACE learning center contract. Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, the two other ones. Oh, I don't have a presentation.
Long range on the white.
So we have a handover contract with ACE Learning Centers. That's for alternative programs. This year, we have 30 slots at 7,200 slot. The extension for one year is for 25 slots at 7,650 per slot. That's about six and a half percent increase, which is, is about the amount of inflation. We're, we're doing two things on reducing slots. We're going to have two shifts instead of three. ACE students have been meeting in Husky Support Center for most of the year. And so we're making sure that two shifts will get kids out, kids and staff out by around five o'clock instead of going into the evening. And also, we haven't kept all of those slots filled all year. So we're just trying to make sure we are, have enough slot. We have the right number of slots to keep them full. So it would be 216,000 for next year. I'm sorry, it would be 191,250 versus 216,000 this year. It's actually a reduction. So I'm recommending that the Board approve that contract extension.
So just to clarify, what are the time slots? Like what's the timeframe? Because I know apparently they do have the three and they end at four. So if we're decreasing the two, what's going to be that end time?
I didn't ask Julie how that, I just asked the, about the reduction of slots. Did you, you know?
What was the question?
What timeframe? Two shifts will go to on ACE? I don't, I'm sure Julie knows, but she's out of her.
I dare.
No, I was.
And are we anticipating, are we continuing to decrease the slots for ACE staff? At one point in time, what I would call that being the goal. And I may be making this up in my head, but I follow that.
Yeah, but we didn't, she doesn't, I mean, we don't want to eliminate it completely because it is an alternative to either law options or to credit recovery and getting a Ritter diploma. So it's still a, an option that we want to keep open so that it still helps our graduation rate for those students that want to take that route. So, but they're just, we haven't kept 30 filled. So that's why she's, well, they're keeping a second number of personnel, but just five less slots.
It was the creation of Missouri Options Program, which came online about five years ago. Missouri Options is an option for a number of students, but what we see is there are some students that aren't able to qualify for Missouri Option and then ACE can be a good, a good option for those students as well. So as Missouri Option has increased, to some extent, ACE has decreased.
So we're going from 30 to 25 and splitting in.
So we're going from thirty to twenty five and splitting into two.
From three sessions into two sessions.
So I guess you would know like.
Mrs. Thomas? When is the timeframe going to be if we go to two sessions?
It's going to probably be seven thirty until ten thirty, and then eleven until two thirty.
How was, how was the staff turnover there?
Much better than what it was in the past. So that was part of our agreement last year. Remember when we decided each that was a non-negotiable. So it's been a while, but there are two people.
I actually had a chance today to go over there to the Husky Academy and went down to, I didn't realize that ACE are physically, physically. I've heard and say that, but it didn't register. But I got a chance to meet the staff and just talk about, we talked about some of the things that they noticed just in general this year compared to previously. And they shared like that consistency of staff, but then also having more intentional intentionality from Ms. Pam Harvey with the curriculum and the guidance and setting goals. So more goal setting and that inclusivity part, where typically like ACEs allow to kind of function, do their own thing. There's been more accountability in that space from the leadership over there. So that was, that was positive for me compared to what I've generally heard about ACE. And it was a nice cozy space.
They're comfortable with this.
Yeah, yeah. And they said, they acknowledged it like at first we were not, but we had some problems with it, but like now we like it.
Madam President, I move that we approve the ACE learning center contract as presented in support of education this evening.
Ms. Eaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Marika Stenblad?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvich?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We will move on to three point zero six, ACE graduation location. Dr. Bruce Green and Dr. Dana Jane to present on options on the ACE graduation location.
Good evening. Been sitting for a while. So beginning again to our board members, I feel proud of the community. Tonight, Dr. Heywood and I would like to discuss or present on the location of our graduation ceremony for students that graduated with the next diploma, looking for this to take place next school year. As we reflect on our vision, we're focused on producing graduates who make a positive impact in society and lead to the life integrity. Our goal is to equip them with skills and knowledge that they need to help conduct communities in the community as well as contribute to the greater good. Regarding to our mission, our aim is to develop graduates who can make a positive impact on society by leaving fulfilling lives with the skills necessary for success in our diverse global society. In addition, we're also committed to making sure that our alumni are equipped to face the future with confidence. That's where I equally stated, the goal by equally stating imperative tonight is to provide a great education for every student, every day. And one of those, one of the ways that we do this is by supporting the student as well as teacher advocacy. In doing that, our schools and educators create a positive and successful learning environment where all students and teachers have the confidence as well as the belief in our students' abilities as well as their abilities to achieve their goals. Dr. Heywood?
Well, having had, just let Mark go ahead of me to make this a little easier, and hopefully I'll fill in some of the gaps they saw, because it was already said. But the purpose this evening, the reason I'm sitting in front of you really is to be an advocate and a voice for something that has been conversation in this community for a little while. And wanted to make sure that we presented to the board in terms of exploring additional opportunities to celebrate students who've had success and met the active requirements for graduation for written and/or contracted services, and to provide a ceremony on option for students that complete these requirements through ACE. And so when we think about our graduation rate, last year was a seventy five point eight percent, almost close to pre-pandemic rate. But the reason why we believe this conversation is important because we're looking for ways to improve our graduation rate. So you'll see on the next slide that last year, last school year, we had twelve ACE graduates and three hundred and twenty written high school graduates. And in the eighteen nineteen, I feel like that was the time when you mentioned the Missouri Options shift. And so prior to Missouri Options being in place, there were twenty four students in the ACE program. And then once Missouri Options came, another avenue for students, that's why you see the five and the numbers. And so the following year, there were eight and then four, and then last year, twelve. In order to obtain an ACE diploma, students have to be eighteen credits in the areas that are outlined. It's important to note that one significant difference between the ACE diploma and the high school diploma that we offer, which is twenty four credits, is the four credits in PACAD. And then another significant difference is the point pile that we apply in our traditional program, seven. So some points of consideration that have been shared with me and with Dr. Green from our counseling department and other stakeholders really is around, you know, families having this, being reluctant to allow students to participate in ACE because of the way the graduation process takes place, specifically not being able to participate in the graduation in shakeovers. For many of our families, they've brought up this community, their parents graduated, their legacy families, and having that experience with the entire community is a, is a rite of passage of sorts. Some additional considerations is, is the what if, what if this is the only diploma that our student were to earn because they chose to go into employment after high school, they choose to go into the military? We want to make sure they have an opportunity to have a large deal of celebration for the rest of the community. We also note that families do not always, they don't see the transfer. They know that their child has completed the requirements to obtain their high school diploma. When we look at Missouri Options, our students are allowed to participate in graduation. So for that reason, that's an alternative method to gain their diploma. We also would like to at least present and have considered that our ACE students would be able to do the same. Graduating students from ACE are captured in our graduation rate, raised off the six. And so they are our students. We want to make sure that they are celebrated and that they know that if they qualify for ACE or if they choose that pathway, they're not being taken to set aside. They're still a part of our community.
So when we look at the data that's on the screen, as Dr. Heywood started pointing out, this data as well, and considering the other slides as well, is closely tied to M CIP. And this particular standard falls under equity and access, where the school system prepares all students and identifies groups of students for post-secondary success. So said another way we look at this, this is a part of our graduate follow-up data, where our points are garnered as we look at where our students are a hundred and eighty days after they graduate. And in looking at this data, many of our students opt for employment, military, or skill training rather than pursuing a college degree. So more specifically, when we look at this data, when we look at the score your average, we're looking at about thirty three percent, and that's the average over four years where those students enter into work. In two thousand nineteen specifically, we'll look at, we're looking at about thirty nine percent, maybe forty percent of our students that opted to enter into employment, military, or skill training rather than pursuing a college degree. That following year, we're, we're looking at probably forty two percent or forty one point five, to be specific. And a big jump in two thousand twenty one, we're at fifty one point six percent. In two thousand twenty two, forty one point one percent of our students opted to enter into employment, skill training, or the military. So when you look at this data as well as graduation, some of the other data points that we look at, it's important for us to look at providing varied options for our students, because not all students are going at the same time. We in no way want ACE to become a destination, but we do want to ensure that ACE is an option for our students as they look to pursue graduation, graduation from the written school this year. With that being said, it is our recommendation that we give the twenty three, twenty four school year, not this school year, that we allow students to complete all ACE requirements, ACE and written high school requirements, and participating in the graduation ceremony as shakeovers or any traditional graduates. And we put those, written high school requirements, because there are other requirements that we definitely want to make sure effectively, such as ensuring that they take their E O Cs and things of that sort, because that's closer to the times in particular as well. So at this point in time, we thank you for your consideration. And we'll ask if there are any questions that you can add.
How many credits is it for Missouri Options?
So I don't know the exact number of credits. I believe it used to be seventeen, but they actually took a test, a high set test, and their diploma is awarded after they successfully pass that test.
Jen, you have to meet certain requirements to even be in Missouri Options, and you have to pass a test prior to getting accepted to take tests. And then in order to get your diploma, you have to pass five tests, whether seventy percent or higher proficiency. So it means. For Missouri Options? That's for Missouri Options. And you do have certain requirements prior to even going into Missouri Options. And you must be at least sixteen years old and a year behind in price. Can you remind us again, the requirements to be in ACE?
So to graduate with ACE, they would need eighteen credits.
But there is certain requirements to even be considered for Missouri Options. What are the certain requirements to be considered to? You need to have ten credits, and they have to meet certain requirements for the ACE program that you need to go in to meet some of these eighteen credits. However, over the years, we have allowed students to have one credit and go over to ACE because we're trying to get them to graduate. And some of the ACE graduates cannot pass the Missouri Options. So I guess I'm just asking, like, would it, would this get students to maybe finish in three years? Like, if they took this option and. Typically, these students are not going to finish in three years. These are going to be their four or five year students.
And that has been the fear for, like, you might be asking the question, so ACE is a separate private.
Right.
And so the fact that it's a separate private that we can consider for written or graduates, it's a unique arrangement. And the long-term fears Dr. Green had shared was that ACE could be considered, you know, the number one option instead of perhaps the number three or four option, because the goal is to graduate students with a written high school diploma with twenty four credits. But as students progress, if the right structures are, are not proving effective, if students dig themselves a big hole and are not able to crawl out, if we don't have the supports in place, you know, ACE could become a better option. So for a long time, the answer has always been no around this question, that in the name of trying to prevent ACE from becoming a more attractive option for larger numbers of students, the idea that ACE students would walk in a large, in that shaped ceremony of a large school ceremony, the answer has always been no when the question has been asked in the past. Though why for now, for me, for allowing this question to come to the table, has been as we're looking at M CIP six, as we're looking at the graduation rate and the need to graduate students with a certificate, that's why I've allowed this question to come to the board at this point, when it's always been known the last eight to ten years.
I guess my, my thought of all this is, is these are neighbors' kids. These are written kids. These are our friends' kids. These are our kids. And they've achieved what we asked them to achieve. Whether it's different, we know the high flyers, the top, top ten percent of our students are going to, are going to be there. These are the kids that need help. These are the kids that need a victory. And part of that victory is get to celebrate. Who should they celebrate with? And I think that should be their, their classmates, their neighbors, their friends. And I guess to deny them that and say, no, you got me over here, I, I think maybe we've got an opportunity here to maybe, I won't say it's wrong, but make something more right for these kids. Yeah, this might be the only diploma they get. Let's, let's make it a good day for them. Because at the end of the day, they're written kids. And they deserve everything we could put toward them since they did their, their work by getting these requirements done. By two cents, that's, that's what I would look for and advocate.
So they get a written diploma?
They get an ACE diploma. It is not a written diploma.
So two things that come to mind for me, looking at the data, we're saying in two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two, twelve of the, we had twelve ACE graduates. And then going down to the fact that they are graduating, students from ACE are captured in our graduation rate. So what, are, are we anticipating that we would see a higher percentage? And what do you think that percentage may potentially be? I'm a data person, so. And then the other piece is, if we really talk about integrating this into our existing graduation ceremony, what does that look like as far as the flow, the program? I mean, like, because I don't really, I guess I would have never noticed on the program that the Missouri Options students were, to my knowledge, they're not separate. They're all integrated into the ceremony. So would that be the same process? Or have you all even thought that far ahead?
I would say I can calculate the statistics right off the top of my head, but the goal is to fill the twenty five seats. So where now we have seats that aren't being filled, as far as from my previous presentation. So it would be to have families select that as a route, because what I'm hearing from our counselors is that they are reluctant because they'd rather hold out hope that they'll complete the twenty four credits during the high school so that they can walk across the stage with their fear, in case that they would get hurt, with, that they play and live in the community with. In terms of the actual makeup and flow of the ceremony, in my previous leadership experience, ACE students were a part of our, of our ceremony. And we had variants of callers similar to what we do here at the high school. And there's the asterisk that just noted in the program where, you know, they were ACE graduates. But there was no, we didn't single them out. So it wasn't like a separate session for ACE graduates. They were part of the ceremony.
And we, we meet on the graduates quite frequently when we're discussing where graduates are. And I recall the last evening, we had, I believe, there were fourteen students that are anticipated to graduate within the fall of next, when it's not going to give them a little more.
You got me exactly.
When I think about this, I think about the fact that life happens. And sometimes kids, I, I have to commend them for taking that effort to at least get to here, to whether it's eighteen or twenty four credits. And if getting them to, it's a walk across the stage is what gets them to make it to that stage, then I can't see that you would turn this down.
Yeah, I wouldn't want that to be a barrier, you know, to like actually being there choosing that option if that's what's best for the student. And that's perceived as a, as a, you know, turning, making it not as appealing of an option, or not an option at all in some cases. So, yeah, I wouldn't.
Can I ask, what is state law for graduate?
What would be?
What do you have to have to graduate?
Twenty four credits.
I'm just really confused about Missouri Options students getting a written diploma and the ACE students not.
So it's two separate state programs. So Missouri Options came along, you have to be, you know, as Julie said, and you have to be more than a year behind in credits. So it's a, a new program that came about. The ACE program was a, you know, a. The ACE program was a, you know, a separate alternative that had been around for years. North County significant enrollment. And at some point, under one version of school improvement of MSIP, you could start counting ACE graduates as graduates in your district. And so the why at that point that decision was made, we don't know. But it's an alternative path to a certificate.
But the Missouri Options students that are counted as, as Rittner students?
So both ACE and Missouri Options are counted as Rittner graduates. ACE students get an ACE diploma. Missouri Options students get a Rittner diploma.
And they are at the graduation?
Missouri Options students are at the graduation. ACE, the ceremony this year is May twenty-third and it'll be in the auditorium or lobby. This would, moving forward, not this year, but next year, the ACE students would go to the shake for ceremony as well.
Well, I would, I would venture to say that probably a vast majority of our regular Rittner senior class, that this is going to be the only diploma and celebration that they have for graduation. Even if half of the students up here go to a higher education, they don't always graduate. And I, my guess would be that way more than half, this is their graduation. They get all their diploma, their ceremony, you know, just as it is possibly the ACE students also. Because that just doesn't happen for everybody. Even, you know, even if you get a scholarship. I mean, I've known a lot of kids up here through the years even have scholarships and they go and they last a year, you know, in college. And a lot of us, because they don't have support, they don't support at home. There's a lot of reasons that that happens. But, you know, it does need to be special. And I, if we're going to do this for ACE, the only thing I would say is that I don't think they should be singled out as ACE, you know. I think it would look, I mean, I'm even thinking about like the, you know, the program. That, you know, I don't, I don't know that we should denote them as ACE in there because it could be perceived as considering them a lesser student than anybody else.
Good point. Part of the why that it's been a no from my perspective for so long is it's eighteen credits versus twenty-four. And, you know, we take a look at other places, other districts. You know, if we get to a place where we have the majority of graduates being ACE graduates, does that become the destination and not the alternative? We're trying to guard against that. And that's what's been driving the no answer for a long time.
I don't know why that's a worry because we're the gatekeepers of that. You know, the answer is no, you're not going there. You know, you're unqualified, you know, truly. And our high school principal, Dr. Green, they're the ones that determine yes or no. It's not like they're going to line up outside of our door saying, we want to go to ACE. And then two hundred, three hundred people lining up to do that. You know, they have to be recommended for that, right? And they just can't volunteer, walk up to the door. I'd like to go to ACE for rest of my education. Sign me up, please. And that's not the way it works.
You already shared, or did I wrong, that they have to be behind in credits to qualify for ACE?
And we just voted to decrease the slots to twenty-five. So if our cap is twenty-five, then I'm not, I don't feel like that's necessarily a majority of our students. I think that should be something we monitor. And I think what I'm hearing you all say, we decrease it because we didn't have as many students doing, that were actively participating in it. That's why we would decrease them.
That is correct. But when we think of the twenty-five seats, those are revolving seats. So once somebody leaves, then somebody else can pop right into that seat.
So, what I'm hearing the board say is the majority of us are open to exploring this as an option for ACE students.
And this could always be changed in three years to come if we see that we don't like the way the trend is going.
So that's something the board needs to be cautious about. Like, this doesn't require a board, it doesn't require a board vote. It's not additional money. It's not that. It's really board consensus. But once we start in this direction, I'll tell you it'd be very hard to take it back.
I think my biggest concern in what I was kind of getting at, Julie, is like, you know, I can see people being like, okay, I'm going to get this done in three years so that I can graduate and then, you know, move on to the next thing. Because I even have heard of several students who are like, have one credit that I could finish over the summer, but I have to be here for a whole nother year anyway, or at least half a year. Like, they don't even really need to be here next year because they're so ahead of their credit. So why wouldn't we just let them graduate after three years? So I think that's where my concern comes from, is that students are trying to get through it so quickly so that they can, you know, maybe go to, back, go into the world of employment, you know. But I do understand, you know, if it's people who are, if students who are behind in credits and trying to get them to the end, yeah.
We really try to discourage students that are high performing, that are trying to finish early. We had a situation last year where there was a student that finished early and enrolled at Harris Stowe and was paying a certain rate of tuition for courses where that student could have stayed at Rittner State Dual and enrolled and paid nothing for college courses at Flo Valley. So just trying to keep kids with us for the programs that we have, whether it be enroll, dual credit, whether it be work-based learning for employee, or as we stand up the ROTC program, our hope would be that that program would be able to keep kids with us too, so that they can work towards that E3 when they enlist.
I'm just fearful that that's where we would start to see students go. Just, so, I want to make sure. I think that's where, like, how do you say, no, you can't do it? If we have twenty slots and we have five more to build?
I will tell you-
What are the recommendations of saying, well, no, you don't fit that?
For ACE?
Yeah.
I will tell you generally when a question is asked, is this a Rittner diploma? The answer is no. That turns some students off.
I mean, I guess for me, what you're saying, that the other thing I look at when I'm reading some of the program evaluations, I'm reading this to say that it's for students who may have behavioral, academic, or social challenges to get back on track to graduate. So if you're already on track to graduate ahead of time, I don't understand how you would necessarily qualify for ACE. Would you if you're ahead because based on these criteria, it seems like you would have to be off track to graduate?
You would need to be off track.
Okay. So you couldn't graduate, use it, place up to help you graduate even faster if you're on track?
That's why I asked the question, because I want to make sure that that's-
So maybe I could, maybe I'm confused now. It wasn't a minute ago, but maybe I am now.
Sorry.
So, that's okay. So if they're behind, this is more of something that the counselor, Dr. Haywood, grade level principal, you're bringing to the student in the first place, right? This isn't really something that the kids are coming to you asking about. It's, hey, we want to get you back on track. Here's these other options. This isn't like everybody's lined up asking for this. Am I incorrect in understanding it that way?
In general, unless they have some prior knowledge with another student that's completed the ACE, but it's not, we are normally presented to them as alternatives, to that two credit.
And just the example that right now, when we have open seats, we don't generally have waiting lists to get into ACE throughout large stretches of the year. There's generally just open seats.
Do we often have students who are on long-term suspension for going to ACE?
For math credits also, I wanted to bring that up again. That's, that's another layer that causes some students not to select this route. People are looking to make sure that it's not going to be open in the flooddigs because we have to start at high school one and you have to complete four units of credit. And that tends to be in the high school, that math credits. We look at those students who are close to graduation, they prefer to go to math.
Man, I'm saying, now that I'm looking, for me, when I'm looking at this, this has a lot of the core credits on here. When I look at Missouri standards, we have, which is fine. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it. Let me clear. We have more of those fine arts electives in order to give the students to that twenty-four credit. Maybe the science and social study, there could be some opportunity there if they wanted to go on to secondary levels for college.
The main concern is that we require three years of math. Personal finance is a credit all by itself. And if there's electives that we require for a year, that's not just one year for an ACE program.
Last little question. So this says that we're just at a discussion, but the presentation has a recommendation for that.
So it's not-
Status. Okay. They can make the decision.
I think it would be good to see.
Yes.
Any last thoughts? Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
One to three point zero seven, personnel recommendations, Dr. Michael Tens, personal recommendations for the first.
Good evening, Board members. I'm here to present, I'm a contributor to one hundred and seventy-three.
Just talking about more than-
Yes, I agree.
Many of which are summer schools that, as you can see, hopefully any questions or comments you may have.
What happened with number ten?
I didn't see that, like.
Yeah. Person accepted the offer, we sent a contract and they were under the understanding that they could get released from their contract and then were led to believe they could not. And they started to get concerned about legal ramifications of anything they contracted with the names in mind.
Because we've got none of them.
So all of these faculty members that are pursuing another opportunity and such, did they return their contracts initially?
So, these are, all of those are ten years in, so they're not required to return. And they can resign up until June first without us having a suitable replacement.
How many seventh teachers do we have? I know I did calculate it. Are we good? Are you still needing more to sign?
Dr. Stewart is monitoring it with the Lees and they're tentatively holding on potentially a couple more positions with the numbers. So we need to act.
I think we're letting them one. One?
Madam President, I approve that we accept the recommendations, personnel recommendations to the Board of Education for number one through one seventy-three.
Mr. Eaton? This is Andrew Breskow. You have Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
This is Sardan. And this is Wallace? Yes. I'm out of all of those.
Thank you, Board members.
Is number forty-nine, I think it is?
Yes, it is. This is George Breskow.
Number three point zero eight, we will open it up to the board member comments. If you're working with somebody comments in.
The only thing I want to say is, as we've done the awards nights the last week and this week, I want to say thank you to Ms. Bous and her staff for being there. As you all know, SSD is special to me and to see our parents and that being there to help walk those students across the stage where in other areas they might not have had the courage to do that. So thank you for that. And hopefully next year, I saw a couple of schools that didn't have that, make sure that they have representation also.
I love coming to these ceremonies. They're payment in full for what we do. I've done, that was a great night tonight and last night as well. Talking to the parents after they leave and thanking them for being here, they were just, every one of them, I just said something. Was just so appreciative that we had this for the kids, that we were here. Again, just listening to the parents. Thank us for doing this for them. It was a great night. Second thing, I was talking to my daughter a few days ago. She works for that Ferguson Forest School District. And of course, I had to ask her, you guys are teaching summer school? She says they haven't posted anything yet about summer school. And this was two days ago. So we're, we got people in place, my guys, people in place. We got, voted on, they raised a roll. They haven't even asked anybody if they want to teach summer school. And they got out about the same time we did.
We got one spot open.
If that's all we have open, they're doing a great job. And I do appreciate everything you've done by coming. Outward, all these other districts that I hear, read about, and talking to my daughter and everything. Man, I'm telling you what, you're doing a great job.
I did have one, are you done, sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I did have one thing, or two things, maybe. For the teacher from America, when she was talking about that, you guys were talking about, you know, opening that up today for other teachers. Just wanted to kind of poke out maybe even the Grow Your Own program, students that are a part of that, like maybe even including them or at least having a presentation given to them so that they know what that is.
About the Teach for America program?
Yeah. I don't know if that's done or not. Just wanted to throw that out there. And unfortunately, it was a long day, so the teachers accidentally captured their presentation to us. And so I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Elder for coming forward and bringing that to us. We know that cleaning and everything has been a discussion that we've all been talking about for years. And so maybe we could spend some time with us as the board trying to find out other things, other options. But one of the things that I wanted to say extremely thankful for is that when we came, you know, they talked about solutions. I appreciate when people come with ideas and solutions instead of just, you know, coming with what the issues are. So just very thankful for that. And then also just, the other piece of that is, that was the high school. What are the other buildings? You know, are we hearing as much noise in the elementary, those?
We hear about SEC and the high school. Those are the two buildings at this point that we hear about. From time to time, we hear about other buildings, but at this point, SEC and the high school are the two that we hear about.
I did want to go back to the problem with Jennifer saying, I know that was not traditional, how we tend to do our public comments, but I appreciate the board's flexibility and willingness to be receptive to hear from our staff and that's- flexibility and willingness to be receptive to hear from our staff in that space because of that concern. I have shared some ideas and I know Ms., Ms. Melly reached out from NEA where they want to get together with, um, leadership to talk, talk about some ideas as well. Like Mr. Elder mentioned some things tonight, but trying to intentionally set down spaces to work together. So I don't, I don't think that it's coming from a place of malice at all, but most definitely coming from a place of how do you collaborate and make this really be a part of improving our learning environment so that people can really just focus on that instead of when you meet with somebody, their comments, they're so focused on the cleanliness part that you can't really get to discussing the day-to-day academic performance or the day-to-day academic concerns that maybe you're observing in the space and kind of have to constantly redirect conversations. You know, and there, some of, some of it may be valid concerns in all, in those spaces. So, see, I appreciate that.
Any other building comments? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda items.
Madam President, at this time, I would move that we accept the recommendations of consent agenda items 4.01 through 4.10.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
This is Mrs. Scott. Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
This is Sardar? Yes. This is Wallace? Yes. And I vote yes.